Qua- allegiance to the flag, United States of America, for which we stand, a nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Diane, I sent some minor changes to Diane. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the agenda, not the agenda. All in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries, the agenda is approved. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the July tenth regular meeting. It has been a while since we've had a planning commission meeting because we just didn't have agenda items. So it's from the July regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes? We'll have discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion, Ms. Earl, I think you had some changes.
Yes, just minor changes that I sent to Ms. Diane before, so they've been made. Okay.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the minutes, the approval of the minutes for the July tenth meeting carries. We'll now move into the public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. And I'm going to read the public hearing procedures for zoning hearing hearings. And it will apply, these will apply to both. Each side will have an equal opportunity to the floor. And there'll be a time limits established for this public hearing. If you desire to speak in support of or in opposition to the item, you must fill out a public comment card. And Diane, what color are they this time? They're white tonight. So fill out a public comment card and turn it in to the city clerk, if you would please. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk. All speakers should identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. In this case, Diane, how many cards do we have for the first public hearing?
Three.
Okay. In this case, each side will have ten minutes to present the case. This is for the first one for Warble and Ring. The applicant may take as much time of the allotted time for the supporting the issue as he or she may want. All others speaking in support of or in opposition shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. This, the chairman may extend a lot of time for an equal amount to both sides. How many comment cards do we have for the second item so far? Two? Okay. The same time limits will apply then. The applicant and all of those speaking in support of the application will speak first. The applicant may choose to save some of the allotted time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Those opposing the issue will speak next. If any time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut the final remarks made by the applicant. Written comments in support of the issue we read outlined. Do we have any written comments, Diane? All right, well, we'll move on from that. If we get any for some reason, let us know and we will deal with them at that time. Following the presentation by the applicant, those speaking in support of the application and those opposing the application, the city staff shall present their position. The city clerk will keep track of time and will inform you when your allotted time is expired. During the public hearing, members of the planning commission shall listen to the presentations made by all those who speak. No action on their part is in order until the chairman declares the public hearing complete. At that time, the commission will discuss and make decisions. In addition, the applicant shall not submit new material to the planning commission during the meeting unless requested to do so by a commissioner. All material which the applicant wishes to be considered shall be submitted to the city planner prior to the meeting so that the material may be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. And the packet has been online since last week with the application materials. That was the beginning of this week. Right, that's right. I remember that. My apologies. Finally, in a rezoning matter, the applicant and any person who desires to speak during the public hearing who has contributed campaign contributions totaling $250 or more to any member of the council or the mayor, shall disclose such contribution prior to speaking during the public hearing. So those are the, those are the rules of it. Let us begin the public hearing for Warble and Ring. And this is a rezoning request by Warble and Ring LLC for rezoning of 100 and point eight hundred and thirty-five acres, 100.8 acres from rural to HMR residential hamlet. Mike, do you want to say anything initially, or should we just go straight to the applicant? What's your preference? Okay, applicant would like to make a presentation? Did I, did I, did I understand correctly that you have a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Is that?
That's going to be presented by Mr. William here. And then I just want to say a moment.
By all means.
And invite Rachel to come speak more about why residencies, why an art residency program? She's better suited for that. I'm just passionate about it because I have experienced art residence, art workshops through the John C. Campbell Folk School. I studied blacksmithing there and then went on to the Penland School of Crafts where I met Rachel. Spent several weeks of classes in the blacksmithing and metalworking. And then in two-week sessions and then an eight-week session in the winter. So this is, these are examples of a type of program and property. We'd like to use our property for that. This is Rachel Garceau.
Good evening. So Grady just wanted me to take a moment.
Please identify yourself and where your residence is, if you would.
Oh, yes. Rachel Garceau. I live at nine two two five Selbourn Lane in Chat Hills. So as Grady mentioned, we met at a craft school in North Carolina however many fifteen, thirteen years ago or so. And I've had more than twenty years of experience working as an artist, an arts administrator, and a board member of nonprofit arts organizations locally and nationally. And so essentially, when we talk about an artist and residence community, we're talking about a community that supports working artists in a variety of capacities and a variety of timelines. So it may be an artist who would like to settle and live long-term permanently in a community of other working artists. It may be an artist who is looking for two weeks away from their home to focus on a particular project without the distractions of their normal daily life. And so, and many spaces in between. As I mentioned, I've had opportunities to do everything from a one-week residency to a two-year residency across the country and also internationally. So we're, we're hoping that the commission will support this project so that we can bring something like this to people locally and to come from afar to experience making art in Chat Hills.
Thank you. Is this the PowerPoint? Mr. Denton, is this, do you have it back there loaded?
Question is answered.
If you could identify yourself.
Sure. My name is William Hunter. Actually, an architect and designer, working with Grady and Rachel. And I am at Chat Hill Residence. I live at eight seven seven five. I live on Watkins Road. As I've been working with Grady, this, when we, we met through friends. And what's important in kind of qualifying me being a resident here and also that we're friends and we have, we share a community together is actually when he came to me talking about this kind of project. It's something that I felt really, I had skin in the game for even my own family and for the community of Chat Hills. So I think that for everyone to know, it's, it's actually, the heart of this project is rooted in something that is for the greater community, not just an individual enterprise. This is not a real estate venture. This is something that actually is meant to enhance culture, enhance community. Is there a way to go full screen on that? Okay, we can just go to the next slide. So Warble and Ring is an artisan resident community emphasizing craft work and kinship with nature. What the intention of that is, is to create a community that has, that pulls in, as Rachel was saying, pulls in artists to come to work either on a temporary basis or for a longer-term basis. And even potentially living on site to actually be working within a community that has shared experiences with an art and shared creativity. The kinship with nature part is that on the, on the site itself as well is to, the intention is to have agriculture, permaculture, food gardens, to grow food, to actually support this community and support those who are visiting during workshops or weekend work. There's also proposed, if you go to the next slide, there's also a market and a cafe. There's also for RICO Road that is planned. And that market and cafe is also intended just for larger community use, but it's the food within Warble and Ring itself that's being grown will be actually participating. Food will be participating within that market and that cafe. And also, we're looking for cooperative agreements with local farmers. In the proposal, there's a hundred acres, eighty acres of that, a hundred will go into the conserved land. This is, we're looking for the lowest density possible to facilitate our needs. This zoning, we could be asking for as much as eighty residential units, but we don't need that many units. So we're looking for a low impact so we can preserve as much land as we can. Next slide, please. This is its location. You can see it's, it's just south of, South Fulton Parkway on RICO Road on the east side and on the east side and Caps Ferry on the west. Next one, please. So what we have here is you have two clusters. On the west side, which is your Caps Ferry side, you have a first cluster of roughly eighteen, nineteen units that would be part of the housing that is actually tying into the maker spaces on this side. On the east side, on the east side, you have another cluster of housing on the RICO roadside. So you see on the right side of the page, which is, which is, north is up here. So on the right side of the page, on the east side, you see the market and the cafe. There are two houses on, one on the north and one on the south part of this RICO, which are existing residences, which we intend on keeping those as existing residences. In the center of the space, you see the park and gathering spaces. So part of the open space plan here, not just with trails, but with having there being public gathering spaces and a park-like setting that also has permaculture settings and also has food gardens within it. Go to the next slide. This is just a simplified map that's showing how much of green space that there is. The white area is the developable area. The orange area is the civic spaces. So you see the large cluster in the middle is the parks setting in the middle. That tiny little orange spot is like a potential historic site. There is a grave site there that's from the mid eighteen hundreds. And so that, that site is also being allocated as part of parks or something to visit. The HPC has reached out to us to go visit that to, to see what is actually there. And so we're coordinating that effort right now. Next slide. To give everyone a taste of what the, what the vibe is, what the aesthetics of this place are, the, these next few slides will show you kind of what the intention is. These are small little cottages, summer cabins, old dog trot style that could have a painting studio on one side and a small little working condition on another. That would be for more of a long-term resident for up to a few years. Next slide. You have very like maximum unit size here. We're talking about twelve hundred square feet. We're not talking about a really big impact, even within the forty units themselves. We're not talking about large homes here. We're talking about small cottages built with, built within the landscape, made up of natural materials, trying to fit in as much as we can. We really love the rural quality and the aesthetics of the rural Georgia. We really want to enhance that. Next slide, please. All the maker spaces will be built in like styles of old barns. We're talking about salvaging some barns. We're talking about getting barn kits and putting things together, really wanting to use the aesthetics of what we think is Chat Hills and what the community at large represents. And that's what we're looking to do is like for when people do come and visit this place, that they actually are participating in a local culture. These are listed here are some of the few crafts that we're talking about being implemented for workshops and within those maker spaces. As you see, just really craft work represents making things by hand, manually making them, not mass-produced. Next slide. Also, just some things that would be available to public would be larger art events when artists are done with works or done with, done with different exhibitions, like you can put on, put on different events here to actually come and see the artist's work. There could be participation of some of those, even those goods, if you actually have a ceramic, ceramicist who's making pots or that sort of thing. We're talking about that kind of thing also overlapping into the market as well. Next one. Agriculture. Agriculture is a major part of this. It's not only are we thinking about it from food, but we're also thinking about it from a standpoint of how does agriculture actually weave itself into the arts? Think, think of indigo, for instance. If we plant indigo here, a cool little weekend workshop might be is you go, actually go out into the indigo garden and you actually harvest that material and you actually come back and learn how to make a dye. And you end up ending, like ending the weekend, for instance, having made a textile out of indigo, which I think would be a pretty cool thing. That's just one of many examples that we've thought of, of how you actually get nature intertwined with the arts, the kinship with nature part. Next slide. The marketing cafe, like we were saying before, this is really intended to be be a farm market, be something that has got a farm stand on it on weekends, but also has local-made goods. Working and getting into cooperative agreements with people, people locally and regionally, who can actually put their goods here. Pantry staples. And there's a part of it that also says at the last line there, like the baked goods and to-go items from the cafe. So there's like an interface between that of something that's right on RICO Road that actually is something that the community could. And from, from my standpoint as a resident, I would be patronizing something like this. Next slide, please. And the cafe, just having, having food coming out of the garden, finding ways of locally sourcing it, just a simple coffee bar, a simple little music event, just something that really drives community interactivity. Next slide. So this infrastructure down to the technical stuff, we're talking about private, privately septic systems, talking about well systems. We're not talking about anything that needs to be external for this. We're pretty low impact. We're only forty units for, and small units at that for a hundred acres. Already had talks with the fire chief here. We have some plans in place and he's, he's, he's been on board with like system and systems. So we're, we're kind of pointing ourselves in the right direction as far as this. We've worked with engineers as well. We don't really have a traffic impact at this density. We're split onto two halves of this property as well. So we have very few units that actually feed out of Caps Ferry and also feed out onto RICO. The most traffic that we're anticipating would be just the popularity of the market in the cafe itself, but not anticipating it. It's not a very large market. So it's not going to be like a Trader Joe's or something. But it's really just meant to be a small, local, local market, small cafe. And so we're still anticipating that that impact is going to be very spotty and sparse, not like rush hour or getting Thanksgiving meals together. It's not that kind of market. Next slide, please. So then open space and discovery, just again, how does artwork overlap itself with nature? How do we actually take and find, find artists who are visiting, who actually work in the landscape and actually are participating in that, that actually are leaving behind pieces that the public can actually can come out and enjoy? There's, there's quite a, there's quite an ambition for lots of trails here. It's quite a nice big property. Eighty acres is a lot. And this is quite a beautiful piece of land. Got three streams running through it, got a big granite art cropping. That, that is all, all part of the open space plans. Next slide. Building methods, just at this footprint, what I'm excited about is how we can actually find ourselves building on a low-impact way and how we can actually work ourselves around certain existing features and old growth trees. The intention really is to find and set, set these small cottages and small homes and some of these homesteads into areas that actually fit within the landscape. So we're really looking at saving as, as many trees as we can. I mean, it's like Grady is definitely one person that stands between us and every tree on the site. Next slide, please. Gathering space. This represents the three areas in the middle of the plan. This is a natural, the concept for this is to basically put ourselves as rooted in the landscape as possible. This, these are all proposed berm structures. What you have on the left there is a horseshoe-shaped amphitheater. And the next slide, you'll see a few conceptual images for that. The middle space is just an outdoor grill and a place where people can come and cook hamburgers, but then cooked wood-fired food. Maybe that there's an event there, you can actually come and somebody's cooking on an open flame. And then there's an indoor pavilion that has, you know, the ability to be rented out for family events or even be something as simple, like a small drama play gets put on or something like that. You go to the next slide, you'll see a few visuals. So the top we have here is we have a horseshoe-shaped amphitheater built into the berm into the hillside there. The intention is to self-contain any acoustics also to actually have a pleasant experience because South Fulton Parkway is close by. And so it's really for that and also for us to get the landscape and the gardens to actually be, be integrated with the architecture. It's very low-impact visually and it's intended for everything to be woven in with nature. The bottom image that you see there, that's the central, the grill space and kind of the open gathering space in the middle. And on the right there, you see the entry into the indoor pavilion. Next slide. So that's us in summary. The, one thing we have not touched on is that the intention is not for this to be kind of a revolving door of artists. On one hand, you do have that. You do have temporary workshops that last for a weekend or for several weeks. But there's a larger, the larger percentage of these homes, I would say up to seventy-five percent of them are intended for, are intended for permanent staff and for people that are working within the premises or managing the maker spaces or actually your artists, artists that choose to stay. We have artists who will be, who will be applying for up to three-year residency serve potentially. So this is intended to have at its core like seventy-five percent permanency in the sense that most of the people that are living here, you'll know them. If you come multiple times over several months, you'll see the same faces. This isn't meant for every single unit to do that. There is the twenty-five percent that will be more geared toward weekend workshops and geared toward multi-week programs. So that is us in a nutshell.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move to the public comment portion of this, Ms. White. The, do we have speakers in support?
I'm not sure because of the wrong cards.
I'm sorry, what?
Because of the wrong cards, I don't, don't know who's in support.
Well, we'll just take them in order that they came.
Steve Jarvis, did I pronounce that right? I'm sorry. Are you in support or against? Okay.
My name is Steve Jarvis. I live at seventy-seven seventy-seven Barnes Road. I came to speak in, in support of this project. I speak from a perspective of a resident of fifteen years, an artisan fabricator working for over thirty years, and also an art educator who's taught sculpture for fifteen years. This project adds value to our city through the addition of the creative energy that it will bring. It takes the vision of projects like the barn quilts and, and moves them a step forward to the process of hands-on making, people learning how to do things, learning how to make things that is being lost today with, to technology. As I look around and have conversations with people in this community, I realize that just about every rural property has a small workshop, a facility for building things, for making things, and potentially even creative endeavors. They are everywhere. I went, recently went to someone's house who lives two doors over from me and realized that they had a complete machine shop behind their home. Didn't know that before. And I think in conversation, those kinds of things go on all over this community and people just don't know. This project will sort of centralize that energy in a place that will, it will, in many cases, be set up to deal with people coming in from the outside to work. But it also would create the opportunity for people that live here to dabble in things like, or, or learn things, dabble might not be the right word, but learn things like blacksmithing on a weekend, bringing back woodworking, woodcarve, all kinds of processes and practices that everybody wants to be able to do. Nobody wants to go to Atlanta to take a class to do it. So we kind of just do it as like warriors on our, on our own home front. This place will create the opportunity to have situations where people can come on a weekend from our community, learn how to do something, interact in this fantastic environment, and then take that energy home with them in, in support of their own creativity. Yeah, I'm very excited about this. When I heard this project was, was being proposed and going on, the, I, I was amazed and very happy. And I hope that you take this under consideration. It's a definitely a positive addition to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. White?
Our next speaker is Greg Casperin. And he's in support.
Hi, my name's Greg Casparian. I reside at one two five Rayway. And I have a business at one 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 three four San Billy. I'm in support. Everything the last speaker said, I agree with. So I won't add to that. I'm here to speak about Grady as a man, his character. I can't think of a better steward of the land for what he has. He took me on a tour. We've only been, we're here a short time. We're only been here eight years. He took me on a tour seven years ago and was so passionate about the streams running through and the topography. And it was just, it was overwhelming. I got excited. Nothing was there yet. When I, when I watched him build things on the land, how much he cares for it. Has anybody ever seen him build a fire, intend to fire? I invite you to do it. It's an artisanal experience. The way he curates it, it's the wood ready. He gets the wood ready like an artist picks his paints or gets the canvas ready. I can't imagine what he's going to do to this land.
So sorry, I did. So sorry.
I thought it was the aliens. I didn't know. I've watched him build projects, his art, his singing. The only thing that is loud about Grady is his voice, his, his speech.
Is someone's phone? Everybody's phone is on.
So what I've watched him do artistically, creatively is with intention. Everything I've watched him do on that land is with intention, with care. I, I, to a degree that is hard to explain. And I did bring up my phone if it's going to make noise, just because I didn't want to forget a few things. I was honored when he, actually he didn't invite me, I invited myself. We were curious about this project. Tell us about, well, you know, can we see it? So a few of us got to see it about a year ago, where he started to share this idea. And we all got excited and wanted to support him with that. I've walked every corner of that land with Grady over the last six years, and it, I think it's going to be a valuable jewel in the crown of Chat Hills. We are more than ordinary in Chat Hills. We have an extra, extraordinary community. I think what Grady's project will be for generations to come will be something that we're all really proud of. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. On Warble and Ring, do we have any other comments? All right, um, the public hearing comment period of this hearing is, uh, is over. We will now move to the next part of this hearing. Mr. Morton, would you uh, make a present or present your comments on this and your recommendation, if you would?
Be happy to. So yeah, you heard from the applicant, um, only forty residential units proposed. They um, show one acre for the non-residential uses, which include the maker spaces and the market and the, the things you just heard about on the, uh, in the application. Two entrances proposed, um, actually there, we don't know yet on RICO Road. There may be, there may be more than one driveway on RICO Road that hasn't been engineered yet. But there is also one shown on Caps Ferry Road, um, at the rear of the project. Caps Ferry Road is unpaved. We had a little bit of a discussion about that in the work session. We do limit um, uh, development on unpaved roads. But generally, it has been the practice of the department to, if there are um, multiple roads, to kind of divide it, divide the, unless there's an expectation that um, something will be um, overused based on the design. The expectation, if you, if you um, uh, have multiple entrances, that they would be, the traffic would be split among them. And uh, uh, so there was no expectation on the part of staff that access on the unpaved road would have to be uh, limited. Let's see, the residences are clustered as, as we hope. There are recommended conditions. Um, these are uh, written very similarly to other uh, hamlets that we've uh, uh, seen approved. Um, some of the stuff is boilerplate. The limit in the, the density as proposed. Also, uh, conditioned to approve the plan as the concept plan going forward. So they wouldn't have to come back for a concept plan approval, which is the first step in the subdivision and land development process. So they'd be, um, they'd be ready to go there. And uh, staff recommendation is um, uh, for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Um, we, we're going to now move into the discussion by the commission members. And just so everybody knows, this is a discussion amongst us, um, as, as commission members. We can, we can ask questions of the applicant or other people in the audience of the, of staff. But this is not part of public comment, so it's simply going to be a discussion amongst us. We, well, part of our uh, uh, work here is we consider in the code, in the, in our code, there are fourteen standards, they're called review standards, but they are not conditions, they are considerations. And so you don't have to meet every one of them, but there are fourteen standards. They're, they're in the packet that's been available, publicly available. And in the packet, staff has made their analysis of those conditions and resulting in their, their um, recommendation as well. Uh, those are not the only things we consider. We consider all of the, the public comments. We consider the uh, the conformance with the code and other information that has been provided about this uh, about this particular application. So uh, during our work session that preceded this, there were several issues that arose that we want to talk about in particular. But I think what we should start by doing is let's go around the horn here. And Mr. Hayes, I think we'll start with you about what your thoughts on this application are.
Uh, sure. And you know, not to steal Christine's uh, thunder, but I guess, you know, the main concern would be the short-term rentals and how we would address that. Are we looking to make a condition um, to the conditions that we already have so that we can truly address not only to protect the city, but also to protect the applicants regarding those short-term rentals, Mike?
If you think there's a condition that we need to add, we could certainly discuss that and uh, recommend additional conditions to council.
Well, it, it is, I'm not sure there needs to be a condition because it is a code requirement. If you're doing short-term rentals, and the question is whether or not this qualifies as a short-term rental. And if it, I think what we heard at the working session is without more, it would. As I think what we heard, uh, now that doesn't mean that there can't be other solutions to it and that perhaps you can explore with the applicant, but as it stands right now, I think they're subject to it. Uh, I think that's what we heard, or at least from the director and staff.
Less than thirty day, the ones that will be less.
So, so would you speak to that just a moment? Because we want fair notice to.
Okay, so.
Advocate on this.
Right, so um, in, in the city, the way we distinguish between residential uses and lodging uses is basically the length of the stay. Any residents in the city can be rented for thirty days or more without involving the city at all. You can rent your house out um, to um, anybody for a year, for six months, for, for thirty days. If the stays go below thirty days, um, you would be required to get a short-term rental permit from the city. And that's the same with any lodging, right? As we think about different uses for different properties, a bed and breakfast or um, uh, country inn or hotel motel. Those are all limited to, those all have limited length of stay to thirty days or less. And they are um, regulated in that way. I guess the difference between Airbnb, the short-term rentals that we're talking about and something like a bed and breakfast or, or a country inn is that the um, short-term rental is a use of a residential property. The others would be commercial properties, have different uh, uh, building code and that sort of thing.
Is a variance a, a possibility here? It's not been applied for, but.
Right, right. I'm not sure the standard you would be seeking to vary.
The short-term rental applicability.
I guess, is there a, a variance for exemption? Or is there a variance for exemption from short-term rental? Or that maybe it's additional on giving so many permits approved?
So you can't get use variances. Um, it, it, it could be possible. The regulation of short-term rentals is actually not in the, in the zoning, not in the UDC, it's in the, the business section.
Correct.
There are some limitations written in there, but they, um, they, there are, um, there's also quite a little bit of flexibility. A uh, a mixed-use building or a live-work building or an apartment or condominium are not subject to the limitations. For single-family, um, it says the city may limit. Yeah, the city may limit to, uh, to twenty percent.
Not catching you off, I'm, I think I'm, I think we're catching you a little off guard on this. And, and I think we heard that the applicant wasn't really sensitive to this, that, that they may apply to them. And uh, I, I'm not holding my breath on this, but there is some possibility of another designation within the residential hamlet.
That's right, maybe some other sort of, of lodging use or multifamily use. I mean, multifamily is allowed.
Yeah.
It is, it is live work. They are working artists.
That's right.
Some of them are live, live work. Some of them are live work. So uh, I, I think that it makes sense that uh, I don't, I'm not sure we need a condition. Because the code is there.
Right.
And if they're subject to it, they're subject to it. And right now, it sounds like they may be, they're, they're subject to it unless some other solution is found. So, uh, my, uh, Michael Ron, do you have a different, uh, thought on that? All right.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure that the applicant knew that he would be responsible for those short-term rentals, that they are aware of that, and that, that they would have to apply for those.
Fair enough. Um, and I think it's also fair to say that uh, this doesn't have to be necessarily the end of that discussion. That you all can, I would suggest confer with staff and discuss and, and on your own, evaluate the code and see if there are other options that may give you some more flexibility on that. Is, is that fair enough? Does that cap? Christine, I know it was your.
Yes.
Sorry, Rick. Okay, okay. All right, well, let's, let's move on. I, I think one of the one of the concerns was uh, traffic and access, Ms. Earl, what you had. Excuse me, I'm out of order.
You are.
Christine, did you want to make any thoughts or comments on the zoning application?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
And you asked um, what our general thought was, and I think this is generally a really good idea. I've participated at the folk school, on John Campbell Folk School for years, for decades, and have often wished we had something that creative in Chat Hills. I think from the perspective of the comp plan, it, it's not squeaky clean, clean when it comes to residential hamlet, but it does meet all, it checks the checkboxes for it, and the low density and the preservation are huge. And the agricultural component. And I loved the community outreach um, that you offered, the open houses. And uh, got to meet some of the local residents who are also artisans and talent. And what an opportunity to be able to study with them and to bring other artists in the community. So I just had um, a few things in relationship to uh, the, the um, ordinances. Uh, and one was uh, uh, of course, the access onto RICO Road, um, excuse me, excuse me, Caps Ferry Road, which was gravel. And um, I feel confident since the way it's laid out, there won't be more than twenty-five people accessing it at this point. I, I did also consider the amphitheater and that you're opening this up to the public soul for public events. But likely those would be accessed from the paved road um, on RICO Road. So I, I don't think I have an issue with that. If it becomes an issue and there's more people, then it can revert back to um, your concern, Mike. I did have one other um, thing to think about, though.
Before you leave that issue, um, we had the top question about emergency and access and uh, and deliveries um, came up. Are, is that a concern for you?
The delivery, uh, location close to Caps Ferry was, but that it's not going to be farm animals or agribusiness. It's, you have sort of low-level farming there, I'm assuming. That's what the deliveries are, or?
If, if you could speak in the microphone, thank you.
Deliveries would be materials related to the workshops. You know, a blacksmith class would, uh, if there isn't already in stock, certain bar stock, metals of different kinds, uh, shapes and sizes for a particular exercises. So that would be an example. That's.
So considering though.
Yeah, I mean, this is not uh, every day, you know, you stock up like a product for textiles, for example.
So I know we do have plenty of Amazon deliveries on our gravel roads now.
That's true. Oh, yeah.
So there's that, so um, I, I just wanted to mention that. Cause there is the other development uh, right across the street, the hamlet. And that was very specific. It was a larger development, so there was limited access, restrictive access there. But Mike, do you, if you don't see a problem?
So, yeah, it was, in the regulation, it talks about the number of, number of lots to be served, right, by a gravel road. I think the deliveries are a legitimate concern, um, if it's going to, because it's all about wear and tear on the gravel roads and the maintenance of the roads, not only on the outside of the hamlet, which is a public concern, right? How much the city has to spend for that sort of uh, maintenance, but also on the interior, right? We wouldn't um, um, allow the road network to develop in a way where there were, you know, fifty houses back there on the gravel road, just because of the, the concern again for, for, for maintenance on, on the inside. So the deliveries are, are, are certainly a legitimate concern. Is there, would there be an opportunity for taking some deliveries off of the RICO Road entrance? Is that something that, that?
It could be. Yes.
So maybe it's something that we, um, I mean, I don't know if we want to write a condition for it, but something that we sort of evaluate over time and the, you know, the applicant.
The only thing there is when it's related to, say, the makers spaces.
It makes more sense.
They're right there.
Delivering right there.
They're right there, yeah.
To be closer, but, and we can ferry stuff across property, whatever, yeah. All possible. Another thought I had just to, occurs to me, you know, it is not an Airbnb thing. It is, I take a class, I sign up for a class and I get to stay in cabin while it's, so it's, it's, there is something different here that I'm excited to figure out. You know, it's not a typical uh, short-term rentals.
Thank you very much. Um, so Mike, I'm, I'm hearing that you're not thinking we need a condition for this right now that you would like to evaluate over time, and I think that makes sense.
I thi, I think that that's, I mean, there's actually in, written into the conditions, and it's very loose language, I have to say. Says number, it's condition number ten, if circumstances arise that are not addressed in these conditions, the owner agrees to cooperate with the city in good faith to come to a mutually agreeable solution. Don't know how enforceable that is, but it is a, but it is a condition and um.
I, I think it's always there, actually, but um, and if problems arise, the city has police power too. So um, you have another.
Another thing, so on the um, the three existing homes on RICO Road, and I, I think I understood that the, the required buffers would be behind them because they already look rural. They're already established in the rural district, no need to do any more buffering. My concern is if at some point in the future, those homes um, are, are torn down or replaced. If that happens, that one, that buffers need to be readjusted. And that will be, uh, you'll still have to go through the zoning process if that happens. So that's not a concern. But two, I, I thought I saw the farm stand market there. And I just wanted to be clear that if there's parking, that would be required to be behind that building or, okay? Yeah. So you don't see, okay. Okay, that's all I have, yeah.
We could, if you're concerned about, I'm, it's a good, good point about um, potential eventual loss of those buildings upfront. And I would think that um, the city might want to allow them to replace them, but we would want to apply, maybe have design approval or something like that, just to make sure they maintain that sort of rural character. Again, in zoning, as we, it was part of what we discussed in our training, right? You are thinking not just of the applicant, right? But any eventual, uh, this is zoned for, in theory, in perpetuity, right? Um, and so you need to be thinking of future. While we may trust Grady to do um, uh, the right thing based on his aesthetic sense, we want to be sure that we're conditioning this for any eventual owner.
And so what would that, what kind of condition are you thinking?
So what I was thinking of was uh, city council, if, if the building, if the three existing buildings that are visible from the roadway or in front of the buffers, we could express it either way or both, uh, are to be replaced, um, that the, that city council, or we could say planning commission, just that there's a design review at some level, um, we could express that however, however you felt appropriate.
And if they're just demoed, um, the screening, replacement screening or?
Right, that's right.
Right, new screening. Ron, does that?
I was concerned with that word replace, uh, because that may not necessarily be the intention. But I think if we were to adjust that language to uh, something along the lines of just demolition, just keep it a demo, then that would just be the trigger that we would need in the office to be able to, to begin a review of it.
While we continue to talk here, why don't you for a little bit, why don't you think, see if you can put some words down, talk about it? Um, uh, I'll, I'll make my comments now. The fourteen um, considerations that I mentioned earlier, there's a detailed evaluation by staff in the packet, and I generally agree with them. I do have a question about one comment. It's in item number six, and it says, "The provision of water presents an interesting challenge." And what is that? What are you thinking? What is that, what are you thinking there?
Mostly about fire flow, right, with 40 houses on 100 acres, you can probably dig enough wells to supply water to everything. They have, as I mentioned, had conversations with Fire Chief about meeting the fire flow requirements, they're talking about cisterns. The engineering work hasn't been done, and it may be an expensive solution, but it's not insoluble, it's not...
Is it fire or potable, or both?
I'm sorry.
Is it firewater, is it potable, or is it both?
I think, I think fire is the bigger question mark. They will have to have enough wells for potable water, right, on domestic water service. I don't see that as being quite as big a question mark. I think it's a matter, again, on the 100 acres, how much flow you can get from a given, a given well. I, my thoughts on that began from this idea that, you know, the entirety of South Fulton was sort of anticipated to be smeared with one-acre lots on well and septic. You know, that was kind of the concept forever. So if that could have been supported, certainly 40 units on.
I doubt if that was deeply evaluated, to be perfectly honest, but I take your point, I take your point.
And they won't be able to build if they don't have water.
No, they won't, they won't, and so that's fair. I think that it is, again, I agree with your analysis, Staff's analysis on this. I think the presentation materials are persuasive. The, I think the agricultural component of it is interesting, and I think there may be some additional work, but that's, that's not for purposes of this consideration here. I think the fact that it is close to South Fulton is important, and I think that's, that helps to put traffic out on South Fulton, which I think is a good thing. So the public outreach is impressive, so I am, I'm in favor of this. We have several options for our approval, for our decision-making under the code. We can approve, we can reprove as recommended by staff with their recommended conditions. We can approve with those recommended conditions, plus revised conditions. We can deny, or we can recommend deferral. Is there, it sounds to me like we are talking about approval as recommended by staff with their conditions and perhaps a revised condition, so what is the, what would the revised condition look like, Mike? Or, Ron, excuse me?
Still working on the closing this section out here, but demolition of any or all of the principal or accessory structures that currently align along Rico Road shall be subject to design review by the Planning Commission to consist of, but not limited to, expanded buffers and restoration of, or restoration of buffers, and that's kind of where I stop there.
For design standards for the building.
Architectural design.
It sounds like you've done this before, Ron.
A few times.
A few times. Mr. Johnson has quite a bit of experience here in this thing. So I think it's time to entertain a motion. Does someone have a motion they would like to present?
I make a motion that we approve this application with Staff recommendations and the condition that Ron is working on to be provided any second now.
Yep, almost there, just one.
And just to clarify, so I understand, we're a recommending body. Our approval means a recommendation to the City Council to approve this, so that's what this, that's what this context is. So the motion on the floor is to approve the application for rezoning of the 100.835 acres from rural to HMR for Warble and... I do have another question. Why Warble and Ring?
Yes, I have that question here, yeah.
Well?
Sorry, it's, that's, that's okay, that's okay. Anyway, remember...
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor to approve this application with the revised conditions, all your conditions, plus this additional condition, which is?
Demolition of any or all of the principal or accessory structures that currently align along Rico Road shall be subject to design review by the Planning Commission to consist of, but not limited to, expanded buffers and restoration of buffers, architectural design and/or site planning.
That satisfy your motion, Ms. Cyril? Does that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, wait, are you good?
I just brought up maybe changing a line along to visible from.
I agree with that.
Will you read it again, please?
All right. Demolition of any or all of the principal or accessory structures that currently are visible along Rico Road shall be subject to design review by the Planning Commission to consist of, but not limited to, expanded buffers and restoration of buffers, architectural design and/or site planning.
Is that a second motion? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We will now have an opportunity for discussing that. I do have a question. Does that condition meet acceptable to the applicant? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Ms. White, would you?
Yes, I got it.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you for Warble and Ring rezoning. Let's move to the second hearing, public hearing, and again, the same, the same rules apply that we read at the first, that I read at the first here. Again, if anyone wants to comment on this, please hand in a comment card to Ms. White, if you would. The public hearing, we have, we have an application here, excuse me. We have an application for rezoning request for what is known as the, has been known as the Rico Hamlet rezoning. It's Rico Investments LLC has requested a rezoning of 273.89 acres from RL to mixed-use hamlet. The public hearing on this matter is now open. We'll invite the applicant to make a presentation if they'd like, or make comments.
Chris West, 135 Wimberley Estates Drive, Newton, Georgia. Hopefully the mic will comply, be a little nicer to me.
I apologize, so sorry for this.
Sorry. As discussed in the work session, this has, was continued from the last City Council meeting about six months ago, five, roughly a little over five months ago now, and we have come back to the board with a new plan, a new concept plan, based on the feedback that we were, that the applicant received from members of the community at the public meetings that we had, which were two, and in addition to the last couple of meetings here at City Council, in addition to the comments and feedback that was received from members of City Council. Essentially, what we've done is taken out the commercial core, taken out the condos, and made this all single-family lots that are between the size of just under two, right at two acres, 1.91, I think, up to 15 acres in the 273 acres. We went from 70% open space and civic space to 80% open space and civic space, so this, the intent was that, from the members of the community, that they felt like the last design, although it met entirely with code, was not in the spirit of what was the intent of being to keep Chat Hills rural, and that's what this revised plan does. It keeps it rural. And it may not be, you know, it's probably about as good as, I caution clients, particularly in negotiation sometimes, that right before you're going to get a deal that you can live with, don't always try to get every single thing that you want and have a negotiation go, go a way that you don't. So what I think is that this does is, the applicant has heard what the community has wanted, that's what this plan does, and I hope that we can, can work to bring this to fruition for the... Let me just speak to some of the concerns and how it met them specifically. So water and sewer were a big concern that was raised. This alleviates that because it will now be private septic and deep well on each lot, so there's no need for public improvement or utilities. Traffic was listed as a concern, particularly with the driveway that was going to be in the curb that aligned with Hopkins Road. This, the new plan shifts that down so that it's outside of the curb. In addition to the, the impact is much, much, much lower, but just based on the, the number of residences substantially lessened. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any particular questions that the commission might have.
Thank you, sir. Ms. White, how many comments do we have?
We have three.
And are they?
I believe they're all opposed.
If there are no comments in support, then let's go ahead and move to the comments in opposition.
The first speaker is Richard Dandy.
My name is Richard Dandy. I live at 7780 Vernon Grove Road, which my property is the corner property on Vernon Grove and Rico, which is adjacent to this project. I was a little surprised, I suppose maybe I'm uninformed, but apparently the applicant has completely changed from the original plan, which while I was opposed to that, the changes, he has lowered the density, but he's made, according to what I, I've just seen this map tonight, the houses that he proposes now are even closer to my property. There are more entrances and exits from Rico Road. He went from two to now three, and that's not including the emergency quote entrance that will come out immediately at the very corner, far corner of my property. They've gone from public utilities to wells and septic tanks, which I am on a well and septic tanks, so are all my neighbors. That will directly affect me. It will all, you know, the, the complete footprint of the thing has changed. I was opposed to it before, I'm even more opposed to it now. I don't know, and even they, they've changed the way they, they, they're trying to achieve their goal and trying to go through Serenby and Thee Migrant and all that, which I totally oppose all that, too. It started out as being a completely separate thing. Now they're trying to hook their little thing to Serenby, because that's the only way, apparently, according to what y'all have said, that's the only way it will qualify. You know, I'm, I'm just totally ticked off and confused about the whole thing. I, this has gone on for a year, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I'm surprised that, that y'all would even consider anything like this around here. I mean, I've lived here a long time. I moved here for the purpose of why it is what it is. Now, the other thing is, you're going to tax the fire department, you know, the utilities, I mean, the police? It's going to cause, what you have to ask yourself is, who profits from any of this? Who, is it, is it the residents? I mean, the voters and the taxpayers of this community? I doubt it. They're going to, it's going to drive our property taxes up. It's going to put more on the city and more on the residents that live. You know, I, I, I can't believe that it's gone on this long. Now, that other project y'all were talking about earlier, although I didn't hear the comment, that's, that's totally surprising to me, too.
I think you've, your time is up, yes. Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Ken Hearn.
Ken Hearn, 8525 Hearn Road, Chat Hills. Good evening. My family owns 70 acres directly adjacent to this proposed massive development. We've owned this property for over 81 years, farmed it. On May the 15th, the Planning Commission overwhelmingly voted to deny this recommendation to rezon this property by a vote of four to two. Why are we here again? Why is this even back to the Planning Commission? I'm sure the answer will be that there's been revisions made. It's funny because I looked last week when my family received the letter, and there was no information on the Chat Hills website about what the gentleman just spoke. We just found out now there's revisions made. Should be an embarrassment. I'm ashamed. To find out that revisions were made and nobody's even talked to the adjacent landowners about it. Unbelievable. In addition, the City Council and Mayor was given a mandate to speak with the specific landowners. As of present, Mr. Merrill and his, or his son have not contacted us whatsoever. I attended one of the meetings, but was not able to talk one-on-one at any of the meetings that were held. Still no contact whatsoever by Mr. Merrill. This colossal failure alone isn't enough to deny this recommendation. Now that I come here and I find out and I see this map about this, questions comes up that I've had to write, couldn't prepare for this, that this was just dropped on us, we don't have access to this, the citizens don't know anything about these changes. I thought you had to have 20 acres for housing. Now it looks like you have two to three acres. Unrestricted access to Vernon Grove Road. I was told you can't put a road onto a dirt road, but it sounds like now we're weakening those standards. Serenby, where did this come from? I agree. If you just mentioned Serenby and tag it on, is that what we're doing here? There's been no, no mention of buffers or fences against our farm property, none whatsoever, none whatsoever. Walking spaces, no civic spaces. No donation of a fire station that other developments have to do. I respectfully ask that you deny this rezoning request. I've been up here, just like this gentleman said, for one year. This is my seventh time speaking. And for it to come back again after it was overwhelmingly denied should be an embarrassment. And these changes were not made to the public. I ask you vote no, and do not recommend this go to City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our last speaker is Martha Hall.
Evening. Martha Hall, 7650 Rico Road, Chat Hills. I speak in opposition because I don't think it's safe. The road, there is one road from the proposed development on the Serenby buffered side through this area onto Rico Road. And so there, there's going to be a total 78, I assume, homes if Serenby area has 26 parcels, and then this one will have 52. My main concern is evacuation in case of an emergency. That's one. The other concern I have is, again, is the fire safety concern. Wells are certainly good for individual homeowners, but that's not going to protect the neighborhood in case of that. Has the Serenby adjacent property, has it been approved? I don't know that. And is that going to be the same density of the Rico property that we're looking at now? And then the last thing I have to say is, I'm embarrassed about the sound system for the entire city. This has been going on longer than a year, and we heard that we have money from the audit, and I think it ought to be addressed. I would like to leave that with you all to think about.
Thank you, ma'am. I can't disagree. Just to clarify, do we have other, that was our last public comment, Diane?
Yes, there are comments.
Just to clarify, we, during the public comment period, we listen, we don't interact or, or address it. We'll see if there is an opportunity to respond to that as appropriate. The public comment period of this... Um, the public comment period of this, uh, portion of this, uh, hearing is, is over. Uh, Mr. Morton, Mr. Johnson, would you like to make a presentation? A presentation, comments on this application?
Trying to think of what I need to add. Um, I think we've heard pretty well, yeah, the, the revised plan, fifty-two units, um, eighty percent, um, shown as open space. Uh, open space would be, um, uh, individual open space parcels that would be sold to the, um, uh, owners of the homes, um, that they surround, um, connections to Rico Road, um, in three locations, um, moved farther down. Two of those locations are, uh, in service of the northern parcel, which is about thirty acres, where they're now showing, um, ten residences. It would be a kind of a loop where, that would connect to Rico Road in, in two locations. Um, uh, the, um, they show on the plan, um, the, the eighty percent, as I mentioned, in open space, that's actually open and civic. Um, the civic on the plan is the dark, that is the stream buffer, the darker green, that is the stream buffer and, uh, location of a, a proposed path. Um, uh, it is, uh, proposed now as an expansion of Serenby. Um, mixed-use hamlets have minimum residential density and commercial, uh, space requirements. And, um, the change that the applicant made, which was in response to what they heard in the meetings, um, eliminated the commercial space entirely and went below the minimum residential. Uh, and so because there is a Serenby, um, development immediately adjacent, um, an expansion of Serenby was a, a possibility and evaluated district-wide, with this property and the existing Serenby property, they would meet those minimums. Um, the code does, uh, mention, um, district expansions in a couple of locations. One is, um, one of the fourteen considerations of rezoning, number twelve, talks about, uh, in the case of a district expansion, um, what is the, um, uh, what does the existing district in, in the, um, form of the HOA? What do they have to say about it? And then the other is, um, a few requirements in district expansion. And the one, um, uh, part of that that I, I think is salient is, uh, that it says, um, with multiple owners, it's a responsibility of the property owners to determine the allocations of the required elements, um, uh, meaning in this case, those, um, those density minimums that, that I referred to, that, that this district wouldn't meet by itself. They meet everything else, all of those other, um, sort of numerical requirements. So, um, those do not necessarily need to be negotiated, um, among, among the different owners. So, um, the, uh, staff recommendation is that, um, with an agreement, uh, with the neighboring, uh, district or approval and approval of the site plan as a concept plan.
Uh, thank you. Um, let's, we're gonna move into the discussion among the commission members. And just to repeat last before, this is just among the commission members. We may have questions of the applicant, of staff, of others, um, and we have reserved the right to ask those questions, but this is not intended to be a dialogue, um, uh, except among the commission members. Um, Christine, um, let's start with your thoughts, your comments, and then we'll go around the horn.
Okay. Um, I have two comments, and one might still glory's thunder, but, um, community outreach, that no one has seen this, it's not been put out there, that's a concern. Um, the second is, I feel uncomfortable without an agreement listing where it's presented to us with Serenby rather than it as a condition.
And I believe we heard from the, uh, applicant's representative that they are in negotiations or discussions, at least with, uh, the, uh, Serenby development, uh, leaders. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's been discussions that are ongoing, I would say. Um, and then I, I would also, uh, just make the point again that I think that provision, uh, is, uh, goes beyond what the, the law actually would allow in terms of constitutional perspective.
Um, and, and so there's no confusion that we're talking about. This is, the, as you mentioned, there are two provisions to deal with, and, and one of the, I think you were referencing is section, UDC, section three dash four dash A three, that in relevant part says, if the existing district or proposed district expansion includes multiple owners, it shall be the responsibility of the property owners to determine the allocation of the required elements, and those elements are, for example, uh, u- units per acre density, open space, and all other requirements. So it, it encouraged, that encourages, uh, at least cooperation, if not active, uh, um, agreement among the, uh, the existing and the proposed expansion districts. And the second is review standard number twelve, that, uh, a- again, they're not requirements, they're for consideration, but it is the only other place in the code that actually addresses expansion. So in this instance, it's, uh, I think it carries additional weight, and that is a indicate, or a, a, a response from the HOA of the existing district that they support the expansion. And I believe we've established that that is not yet, um, I think we are of the mind, it's not yet, uh, confirmed that that exists, uh, and that that is part of the, uh, discussions that are apparently ongoing. Uh, Ms. Searle, please go ahead.
Hmm. Um, so as the project was first represented as a, a mixed-use hamlet, I personally thought it met those requirements, but I appreciate the applicant taking to heart so many of the public comments and then trying to revise this application so there is a less density and less impact on the surrounding property owners. Um, you all were not the only ones that got, uh, a late peek at this. This was, I wish that we would have seen this a little earlier on, too. Uh, when the council saw it at the first read, they did not have the information, which, which I wish they would have had, so they would have had more time to digest this. Um, as it stands now, what we said in, in earlier discussions, I had some issues with the idea of a hamlet expansion.
Earlier discussions in the working session.
During the work session, excuse me, yes. And, uh, uh, Mike Morton did explain that this does qualify for it, and it's similar to the G lots, which are the adjoining lots in Serenby to this property. However, my concern is that the intent of the comp plan for mixed-use hamlets is that they should be walkable communities with clustered housing units, less than five acres. Um, and these are clustered, but they're not walkable to the central area of the hamlet if that hamlet is gonna be an expansion to Serenby, which we still don't know at this time if that will be agreeable. So my thoughts are at this time is that, given that the community had a strong desire for less density, I support this plan over the last plan. I think it does meet most of the requirements in a hamlet expansion, but I would personally like to see this, it may not be the right time to say this, I personally would like to see this deferred until that agreement is in place with Serenby, so we can see what that looks like. This is the first time we've had a hamlet expansion that didn't become Serenby. We had a couple of acres on Atlanta Noonan Road in the Deer Hollow that was an expansion, but they are assumed to be part of Serenby now. This is not a, this is not the same thing. So to be clear how this works, I think as a planning commission member that's recommending this to the council, I wanna see how this would work this first time. And then i- if the deferral was this option that we vote on, I would also like to have that time for the applicant to have more community engagement, since this is a new plan. And I, I think that that community would be, uh, more inside, excited and enthusiastic once they see this plan, if it does indeed expand with Serenby.
Um, thank you. Um, I'll, I'll add my thoughts to this. Uh, a- and to put this in a little context, this is a substantial revision of the original application, fairly significant, and I think you agreed with that during the working session. Um, the, instead of being a standalone, um, large hamlet, this is now changed to a proposal, an application to expand, be part of, and expand the Serenby, uh, district to, um, to, uh, to include this property. Uh, and, and the reason for doing that is because of the lower number, or I say the reason, a- a- as, as presented by the applicant, the, um, the property would not meet the standards for, independently meet the standards for a residential hamlet or a mixed-use hamlet, um, i- just by itself with these reduced number, density numbers. And so although it, it met the standards, uh, uh, at least it, it appeared to meet the standards for the original application, by reducing the number of the density of units, it could no longer meet freestanding, uh, hamlet. So, uh, under those circumstances, it appears the applicant elected to change this to be a district expansion proposal. Um, and that was, that was what happened here, and, and all the comments about, uh, public outreach and, uh, more, well, before I get to that, uh, and then last summer, last July, I believe it was, the city council, uh, understood that the applicant wanted to make some changes and extended the period of time for the next, uh, for this to come up again for hearing. It extended by six months, and I'm not sure that was, uh, acceptable or was in the applicant's desire, but they extended it to six months, and that's why it's coming back around now. So, um, the city council asked us to, the, the commission to re, uh, review it again, and that's what we're doing, and I think it's appropriate because of the significant changes. Um, the, uh, it, yes, there, there were, uh, changes, uh, made to, um, as presented by the applicant, to address perceived comments and problems with the original. Um, but I have to tell you, we just received two public comments, three public comments tonight, and, um, in, in opposition, and, um, there's some new information in there for me, actually. And I think there may be additional public comment, um, i- i- if there's an opportunity for it. So I, I agree, uh, Ms. Searle and, and Ms. Gallagher, and I think Mr. Hayes, that, that an opportunity from additional public input on this new revised application makes sense. Um, the, uh, the application materials and the staff package that has been available online since Monday, I think, includes the requisite, uh, evaluation by staff of the fourteen standards that are supposed to be considered. Now, again, they're not required, they're not requirements, they're considerations. Uh, an applicant doesn't have to meet every one of them, but it is up to the, the, uh, commission to weigh them, to balance them, as well as the city council, to weigh them and to, uh, determine, uh, what, um, what makes sense. In this instance, one of those conditions is unique and now applies because it is one of the two parts of the code that actually apply to expansions of districts that were not, uh, uh, didn't need to be in word addressed in the first go-round on this. So I think it is fair to evaluate whether or not it is, uh, this application is in conformance with those, uh, those provisions, and I don't think we have information to conclude that at this point. Um, I, I think it is good news that there are ongoing discussions. Um, and I think that an agreement, as you've recommended, uh, Mr. Morton and, and, uh, Mr. Johnson, I think that an agreement between the, uh, the applicant and the HOA of Serenby, which represents now not just the owners of property in Serenby, but the developer, that that's a nice opportunity, a convenient opportunity to have to deal with one entity instead of multiple entities. So, um, I think that that is, uh, that is appropriate. Um, so I'm in support of the idea of waiting until we see this, uh, this agreement come to fruition and seeing what it looks like, not that we enforce it or anything like that, but I think we need to understand if there is, in fact, I, I don't see how you read this anyway, except there's supposed to be cooperation and, and at least collaboration and at least some degree of communication between the original district and the expanding district. I, I don't, I think that's the spirit of it, and I think that's what makes sense. So, um, those are my thoughts. Does anybody have anything else?
Sure. Um, I just wanna tell the applicant that...
Oh, I skipped you.
That's okay.
I apologize, Charles, because we started with Christine.
Right, right. Um, I just wanna tell the applicant that, you know, I really appreciate the efforts that he has made to listen to the community and come back with a revised plan based on some of the input that you received from council, uh, and also the planning commission. But I also agree that, as we discussed in the working session, that when we look at the UDC and when we look at section three-point-four A dash three, and that, that agreement is real important. We, we really need to see that agreement to make sure that Serenby and Mr. Merrill, that you guys are all on one accord. So that, that agreement is, is real important, and it's, it's also in accordance with the UDC as we're making our decisions. And it's also from hearing what we heard tonight, and not to overstate what everyone has already said, that we do need that public outreach. We, we, we need that public outreach, that community outreach, so that we can hear from the community. We really don't wanna just throw something on the community without them giving their input. So because of those two, two concerns that we have mentioned about their agreement and also about the community outreach, it is my opinion also that this particular application should be deferred until we can get more concrete information on those two items.
Um, we're gonna finish our discussion, and we'll see if anyone wants to entertain that. Um, when we make our decision, we have, um, several choices we can make. We can approve the application. We can approve the application as conditioned, and there are several conditions, and I think we ought to hear about the conditions a little more. Um, we can approve with revised conditions. Um, we can, uh, deny, or we can defer. Those are our five options. Um, and, and I think it would be appropriate, Mr. Morton and Mr. Johnson, if we heard what those conditions are. I think it's important what you have now, because they're changed. They're changed in this application.
They're, yeah, they're, they're quite a bit different from the, the first set of conditions that were here, uh, six months ago, um, with it, with the different plan. Um, in fact, this document of conditions is very similar to, and it's, of course, it started with the exact same conditions that applied on those Serenby G lots immediately to the south. So it's, it's, it's very, very similar to, um, to those, obviously customized specifically for this, um, uh, this application. The first one refers to the density, it's a gross residential density of point one-nine units per acre or fifty-two units, um, on this property, actually, the words on this property are not there, and I would, um, um, actually recommend revising that a little. With additional residential units available for development in the district equal to one, a total of one unit per acre zone or two-hundred-and-seventy-three new residential units available for development in the district, application of these additional units must be in accordance with a concept plan approved by city council. What that means is, the fifty-two units could be applied on this property. The remainder of the units, uh, that normally, naturally always come with the land, the one unit per acre, the rest of those can be applied in the Serenby district, uh, but not on this property, um, with this condition. Um, they would, they would have to be transferred elsewhere in the distant, district, and they would have to be applied consistent with an approved concept plan. Um, most of this is pretty much on boilerplate. It, it ties them to their plan. Um, uh, it, uh, says that the plan would serve as the concept plan for, for the rezoning. Basically, that's the, the next step in the development process, the first step in the subdivision process. Um, so they would have that, um, kind of out of the way already. We specifically, uh, uh, we have specific language in the Unified Development Code allowing it to be approved in this way. Um, uh, there's some, um, boilerplate on connections. The development standards, which includes setbacks, minimum lot size, that's exactly as appears on the Serenby property immediately to the south. Um, traffic and entrances, um, uh, development entitled, and this zoning action shall count toward thresholds for traffic impact study, um, uh, requirements in future zoning applications in the district. Um, if, uh, deceleration lanes are necessary, they'll be built by the, um, and at the expense of the developer, um, and the owner will reserve a little additional space in the right-of-way, um, in case, um, in case we need to take some right-of-way. Um, it's just another fifteen feet, uh, for, for an additional lane or, or something. Um, straw and water management, very much a boilerplate, hasn't changed on a hamlet application in probably ten years. Um, if any location in the buffer is, has insufficient vegetation, it'll be planted or screening. Will it be... or screening will be planted to block, uh, the view of the development. Utility cuts as possible will be at angles, so you don't look straight down them into development. Property must follow demarcation requirement found in UDC section 5.3 dot 1. The method, or 5.3 dot I, I'm sorry. The method of demarcation must be shown on the site plan of any building permit. This is, um, language that's not in typical hamlets, but where Saranby has done these sort of what they call formats, they're not what we call formats in the zoning, but the, the acre or so developable surrounded by some open space. The code does say, that's that section 5.3 dot I, does say that open space needs to be demarcated from the developable space. And because of particular concern for these sort of donuts of open space, that the, um, the development does, does sort of spread out into them, we specifically called it out in the conditions, saying that they need to be demarcated, so you can tell where the open space is versus where the developable area is. Let's see, oh, here's the, the, I guess, the other kind of important one that's, uh, that's related to this particular style. The zoning concept plan shows buildable lots and open space lots arranged in associated pairs, that, that sort of donut I talked about with the, uh, developable residential lot in the middle. The required open space conservation easement, because all of space has to be, um, at some point preserved by concert, protected by conservation easement, or other, other permanent conservation instrument as approved by the city. Again, that kind of language is also in, in the code. We presume it's a conservation easement, what's going to be most likely to be permanent, but other methods may work. On each individual open space lot must be recorded prior to the issuance of the first building permit on the associated buildable lot. So you got to preserve the donut before you, before you build on the donut hole, is basically what it's, uh, what, what that's saying. And this is, again, a unique concern for this style that was approved in the Saranby G formats, the H formats, the F formats, again, that's their, their use, use of the word format. It's not a city format. But, uh, and we've had, we've had that or similar language. Actually, the F formats were the first one we had to deal with. We talked about the CO as the threshold rather than the permit. We pulled it forward a little bit. That's what we did with the last Saranby approval, and that's, um, that's what's proposed here. And then the other one is the one I read earlier about, um, if a circumstance arises, it's not addressed in the conditions, the owner agrees to cooperate in good faith to come to a mutually agreeable solution.
Right. Um, I have a question, Mike. We, we have, as noted during the working session, there, uh, there are a number of the documents that appear in the packet that are from the original application. And, and there's nothing necessarily wrong with that, but I, I, my question is whether the owner certif- and, and those, several of them are a year old now. They date from October 2024. Uh, one is the owner certification, the campaign contribution disclosure report, and the financial disclosure statement. Now, my guess is none of those are going to be a problem, but do those need to be updated, to be brought current?
That's a, um, that's a good thought. We only had them update the documents that dealt narratively with the changes or graphically with the changes they were proposing. But that's a good point. We've had a whole election cycle go by, and, um, we should ask them for updated documents. I don't think it'll be a problem for them to provide them.
I, I wouldn't suspect so. Now, the, the applicant has asked to make comments. Is there any objection? Okay. Um, Mr. West, please.
Thank you for that opportunity. In terms of the public input, I just want to reiterate that we've had two public meetings already and, and a lot of input from the various meetings, which is why we're at this plan. But I would, I would object to any deferral because the city council, on its own motion, deferred us, kept my client waiting for six months. And we've not been able to do anything with the property that sit in limbo, uh, during that time. So any further deferral, any further delay on, apart from this, any portion of the city, we would strongly object to.
Thank you. Um, I think we're ready. Appreciate that you will object to it, but, um, hopefully you can appreciate we need to have information to make our determination according to conformance with the code. Uh, so, um, I think we may be ready for a motion. Someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we defer this application, pending the agreement with the Saranby HOA and the applicant. And also that we request additional public engagement to, uh, to share this new, this significantly changed application with the public. I don't know if I said that right.
I, I don't think the public engagement is a requirement, correct?
Oh, you know, if we can't make it a requirement, then that's okay.
No, no, it doesn't mean we can't recommend it.
Okay.
But, um, or suggest it, but I don't think-
It's not a, it's not a codified requirement.
Correct. So it's, it's a good suggestion, but, um, I think that, uh-
All right, then I can with-
Well, let's, let's, uh, I'm, I'm not saying it's the wrong motion. I just wanted to make that, make that clear, um, that we were recommending. Go ahead and restate your motion, if you would.
I make a motion that we recommend deferral of this application pending an HOA with Saranby agreement that, period.
Uh, as, as recommended by-
As recommended by staff.
However, that's, uh, that is not the absolute staff recommendation. Sorry, we're having to make the sausage right here, but also the deferral can be up to 90 days. It doesn't have to be, but we can defer up to 90 days under the code. That's one of our options. So, so I think that, uh, do you mind if I take a-
You go ahead, but I would just want to say, I don't want to really burden the applicant with any length of time if this can be done sooner by requiring, if you can say up to 90 days.
But that's, that's what the statute is, so.
Yes, go ahead and have, have at it.
No, I think, I think you've said it correctly. So why don't you go ahead and say it again, if you would?
Wait, wait.
Diane, would you read it back?
Done between the applicant and Saranby HOA, as recommended by staff.
So this is a recommendation, recommendation to council?
Yes.
And so if they received something in the nature of an agreement?
Well, the council can always-
For the next meeting. And so it's there, it's, it's a question for them of whether they want to send it back to you or not?
That, that's, that's correct. Now, it is, uh, it is, uh, you had it, language in there that it was satisfactory. Was that right?
Yeah, yes.
So, uh, it, it really, the concept you were going for in there was that there was review and, uh, comment on it. But, um, I'm not sure satisfactory gets it either.
It's in the eye of the beholder.
I, I agree. That may be a little too subjective. So, um, uh, it, it is an agreement entered into consistent with, uh,
The UDC.
Yeah. You know, there, there was the other item, though, and that was the HOA indication of, of support.
Yes, right.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Rather than, uh, a second, would you accept amendment?
Yes.
All right. You all would like to?
Wants to take a stand.
Okay. A, a motion to, um, on the application to defer the decision by Planning Commission until such time as an, an agreement has been provided for review between the applicant and the Saranby HOA, which I believe is the, um, the, uh, Saranby Town Association, Inc., consistent with section 3 dash 4. What is it? 3 dash 4?
3 dash 4A dash 3.
A dash 3. And a letter of support from the HOA for the expansion. And that deferral can be, I don't know if we have to say it, but it can be up to 90 days.
So we're asking to see it back if council decides that. Okay, I like that.
If, if the council approves it. Diane, did you get that?
Yes, sir.
Would you read it back, please?
Recommendation to defer until such time an agreement between the applicant and Saranby HOA.
Um, let's, let's make it, the Saranby HOA and perens, Saranby Town Association, Inc.
Okay, um, with conditions 3A, 3 dot A and 3 dot 4 and A dash 3?
No, A period 3 period.
Okay, A 3, okay. And letter of support for expansion.
I'm, I'm going to make a check. And, and, and also indicating support for the expansion, because it's the same entity.
Yeah, and letter of support for expansion.
Motion had it coming back.
It did. Um, s- sorry, Diane, let, let me, I was asking you to read that back again.
Recommend, recommendation to defer until such time an agreement between applicant and Saranby HOA, Saranby, um, something, Inc., LLC, Inc. With conditions 3.4 and 8.3 and letter of support for expansion.
Is, yeah, is provided for review by the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Ron, your thoughts? Mike?
If you all definitely want to hear it again.
Yeah.
That's, I think that's right. And the, the question, are you, are you specifically requesting two separate documents or-
No, that was what I was trying to clean.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Because it's Saranby HOA. I think it could be in one document.
Gotcha, yeah.
Yep. I, I think it, that could be, easily be a whereas provision or something, but, yeah.
We're good.
You good?
Mm-hmm.
Diane, would you read that back, please?
One more time.
It's an important motion.
Recommend to defer until such time an agreement by the, between the applicant and the Saranby entity with condish-
It, it's the Saranby HOA, and then if you'd put in perens, Saranby Town Association, Inc. N perens.
Okay. Consistent with the UDC 3.1-
3.4.
3.4, that's, I see it, 3.4 and 8.3.
It, it's 3.4A period 3 period.
And letter of support for expansion.
And, and ex-
Is re-
Go ahead.
Is reviewed, is, I can't read my writing, but reviewed by the planning commission.
Is provided to the planning commission for review.
Provided to the planning commission for review.
Yeah, and instead of letter, I think, indication of support. Ron, do you have that, too? Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Uh, that is the end of the public hearing. Thank you. I think for the rest of the agenda, we had a new business? Staff report?
Uh, I was only planning, uh, well, two things, um, staff report. When the, um, that last item was deferred by city council, they also deferred an item on a gas station and, um, some residences, not residents, retail up in Campbellton at the corner of Highway 154 and, uh, you know where I'm talking, corner up north. And, um, uh, that was deferred at the same time for six months. Um, the applicants have-
Campbellton Crossroad.
Campbellton Crossroad, exactly. Within the Campbellton Crossroads historic, um, crossroads district. And, uh, that was deferred also for six months. The applicants have asked for a little more time. They have worked on a revision or two of their site plan. We've gotten two, um, in, in that time, and they want to do a little bit of more public engagement. So I'm expecting that to be on our calendar in January for, um, uh, another public hearing just like this. And then, um, city council in February. We'll, we'll see, right, if they, if they're, if they're prepared for that. But that's where that stands now. There are still things, I think, that, that, um, they should be trying to improve, but we'll see where that, where that goes. And then finally, com- comprehensive plan process coming up. I hope everyone will, there's nobody left. Everyone will participate in the comp plan. Keep, keep your eyes open for meetings. I'm hoping we'll have a couple of maybe beginning meetings, presentations this year. But we'll begin in earnest with all the, um, uh, committee meetings and, and public, really work by the public, hard work by the public, um, next year. I think we'll, we'll be having a lot of meetings, I hope. So everyone, please be involved.
Yep.
I have a question for Mike.
Sure.
Um, Mike, someone, um, asked if there was a, a, another, uh, mixed-use hamlet in the works in this RICO area that you're aware of, or no?
Not that I'm aware of, but nobody's come to me and said, yeah, we think we're going to apply.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay.
Not in years, anyway.
So any other, any other items for the good of the order? Do you have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries, meeting's adjourned.